Good evening, everybody. We want to welcome you to the Board of Education meeting for the Enlarged City School District of Middletown for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. We are now back in session from executive session. I want to thank everybody in the audience for your patience as the board got through some meetings. So a reminder that this agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district website. Vice President Romero.
Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice y nuevamente después de la reunión en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito.
And we'd also like to remind everyone that translation and interpretation services are available during this meeting. If you need assistance, please let us know and we'll be happy to accommodate you.
Nos gustaría recordar a todos que los servicios de traducción e interpretación están disponibles durante esta reunión. Si necesita asistencia, por favor infórmenos y con mucho gusto le ayudaremos.
At this time, we'd like everybody to please stand and remove your hats and face the flag for our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Prino, do we have moments of silence afterwards or no? Okay, so it will be led by Mr. Freddie Williams. And now for the mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. Ms. Tobiasin.
The mission of the Enlarged City School District, the district of Middletown, we strive to provide physically sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously support our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiasin. I've been asked to make a minor adjustment to our agenda tonight. We are still waiting for some additional folks in regards to the communications team spotlight on excellence. So what we'd like to do is move the ELCS Student of the Month recognition to 9A. And then 9B will be the superintendent's update. And then hopefully after that, before public participation, we'll have the other folks here for our communications team. Sound like a plan? Okay. So I need a motion to accept tonight's agenda as amended. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Rep. Was it Mr. Rep? Mr. Prino. Any discussion?
Point of order.
Mr. Williams.
So that's for, you wanted the approval for tonight's agenda?
I need approval for the amended agenda as I just suggested.
Okay, so I have a point of order. I was asking to amend the agenda also.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was gonna, I'm asking to. And the title of the amendment is reorganization of board leadership.
Uh huh. And where would you like that on the agenda?
That can be the last item, it's fine.
Last item of the night?
Last item, so we're doing action items? So it'll be the last item of...
Okay, so we want to add 8G after our action items and before the spotlight on excellence? Is that when you want it?
That's fine.
Okay. So Mrs. Monchery, if we can add an 8G, and that would be discussion regarding board And now I need a motion to, for the amended agenda. Moved by Mr. Rep, seconded by Dr. DeJesus. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Now I need a motion. I didn't do roll call. Oh, we have one opposed. Ms. Tobiasin opposed, my apologies. So it's 7-1. And my apologies, I missed roll call, so we'll do roll call. Roll call, Mrs. Monchery.
Dr. DeJesus?
Here.
Mr. Estrada?
Here.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Prino?
Here.
Mr. Rep?
Yeah.
Ms. Romero?
Yeah.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Yeah.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Yeah.
Pastor Williams. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monchery. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 21st, 2025.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Prino, seconded by Dr. DeJesus. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 8-0. I need a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of October 27th, 2025.
Don't move on that.
Moved by Mr. Prino? Seconded by Dr. DeJesus. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 8-0. I need approval for Personnel Memorandum 11A, numbers 1 through 2.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Prino. Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Romero. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 8-0. I need approval for Instructional Personnel Memorandum 11B, numbers 1 through 13. Moved by Vice President Romero.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 8-0. I need approval for Non-Instructional Personnel Memorandum 11C, numbers 1 through 9.
Don't move.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasin.
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Romero. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Actually, I would not be voting on 11C.
11C?
Yeah.
On all of it or just a certain section of it?
All of it.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Moore? Any abstentions? He's opposing. Oh, so you want it as an abstention or as a no vote?
No vote.
As a no vote. So motion carries 7-1. I need approval for Financial Memorandum 12D, numbers 1 through 3.
Don't move on that.
Moved by Mr. Prino? Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 8-0. I need approval for Special Services Memorandum 10E, numbers 1 to 2.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Prino? Seconded by Dr. DeJesus. Any discussion?
Ed?
Yes.
Mr. President. Yeah, you know, I do the IEPs and I tell you, I'm very pleased with the way some of our students have progressed. I sort of jot down a few things every once in a while from the IEPs. May I read a couple of these? Has come a long way in therapy, made progress since the beginning of the year, easily motivated to participate in work. These are different individuals now. Ability to develop connections with peers has improved, steady academic progress, a noticeable improvement in class, has shown improvement in communication, and is doing his job. So this tells me that our instructional staff at Truman Moon is doing an excellent job. And we had a presentation this evening in executive session, which just solidifies that thought in my mind. So I just thought I'd bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prino. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 8-0. I need approval for Change Orders 7F, numbers 1 through 5.
Don't move.
Seconded by Mr. Rep, seconded by Mr. Prino. If Mr. Bartlett would give us an update on those change orders.
So tonight, as you mentioned, there's five different change orders. Our first change order was to relocate the fire, the power and fire alarm to the new location of the rooftop unit 19 and Twin Towers, and to provide new emergency lights for the temporary egress stairs. There's another to provide equipment and installation of the fire alarm enunciator panel to the main office to accommodate the project phasing. The next is to replace 14 drop ceiling type light fixtures with 14 hard fixtures, plus the addition of one. We also have a change order to encase a high-power underground electric conduit in concrete across the front of the site in front of the new addition. And our last one is to relocate the rooftop unit 19 from the small gym roof to the calf roof to prevent the demolition removal of usable existing gym equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
You're welcome.
Any questions or discussions? Mr. Prino.
You know, we're getting quite a few change orders, which are expected in a building, an older building. And I asked Bill and I asked Dr. Connell, are we good with the contingency fund? And the answer was yes, we're good on that. Am I correct on that, Normal?
Yes, sir. Actually, we are less than a percent. We have a 6% contingency, and so far our change orders is less than a percent right now. Actually, .98. The strong part about all of this is the fact that we are almost 39% complete with the project, which means that we cannot project what will happen when we open a wall, right? But for 39%, almost 40% complete, we're tracking really well with that 6% contingency. We haven't used the majority of it. Still having 5%, a little over 5% remaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 8-0. We move on to number 8G, discussion regarding board leadership. I guess we'll go around the table. Mr. Freddie Williams, you proposed the agenda change.
Yes, I amended the agenda due to the prior discussion, last board meeting. And, you know, we can go around the table, but I'm seeking a roll call vote for the current president to step down into a regular seat as a board trustee. So that's my... So we, I don't think we want to go around for discussion and then do a roll call if necessary?
Well, typically, you need a motion and then a second motion and then have discussion and then a vote. That's typical.
Yep. So me speaking on it, is that the first motion?
You have to physically say, make the motion, so...
I need a motion.
Okay. Well, I can ask for the motion, so you're making the first motion.
I'm the most, yeah, I'm the first motion.
Okay, so then I need a second?
Yeah, I need a second.
Seconded by Dr. DeJesus. And now we're open for discussion. Do you want to start off, Freddie?
Basically, just basing it off of our previous meeting. That's all. I don't really have any too much to say.
Okay. Dr. DeJesus? You don't have to comment, it's up to you.
I feel like I'm in headlights here. I pass.
Mr. Moore?
I appreciate you taking the position on this, Mr. Williams. And as for the public to understand, you know, in order for us to move on, we must all take accountability for everything that we do. And with that being said, you know, I do want to see us move in the right direction. So with this next action and the roll call vote, I hope we can do so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Prino.
My, yes, thank you, President Estrada. Yeah, I expressed my opinion at the last meeting. Mr. Estrada apologized for going into the schools without consulting the board. I don't see, we have a good team. There are a number of people up here. I know Fred Williams did a nice job as vice president, excellent job. We have a number of people here. We have a good team, and I see no reason to change it at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Prino. Mr. Rep?
Oh, yes. I've heard several concerns as we move forward with the termination of new leadership in the board. So before I make any decisions, I would like to hear the rest of the school board members speak before I make a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Rep. Ms. Tobiasin.
I am not in favor of this move, and I have grave concern about the movement behind this. I feel there is much more than meets the eye. Ed made an apology at our last board meeting, and yet there are members of this board who are demanding more. The community can see that this is a 5-4 board. You are spending thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money. How much did the investigation cost this district? How much has board member conferences cost the taxpayers since July? Accountability is definitely needed, so I am not in favor of this move at all.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiasin. Vice President Romero?
I am in favor.
And my only comment is that I serve at the will of the board, so that's all I have to say.
So I know that we've been having multiple discussions around our current board president stepping down, and I believe that during one of the meetings where I was away, that that was the agreed-upon decision. And prior to that, I believe that was the agreed-upon decision. I feel that as a board, if we publicly said something that we were going to do, that that's something that we should do as it relates to the board and as it relates to our assignment as board trustees.
Thank you, Dr. DeJesus. Any other discussion? Are we good? I'm sorry. I go back to Mr. Rep, I'm sorry.
No, no, I agree. At the same time...
You gotta put your mic on.
No, I agree with Dr. DeJesus. At the same time, there were conversations, there were concerns, and from what I understand, it was pretty much understood that the current president was going to make a decision on stepping down. So, I mean, at this point, that's where I stand, that's where I'm at.
Okay, roll call vote.
Dr. DeJesus?
Agreed.
Mr. Estrada?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Prino?
No.
No.
Mr. Rep?
Yes.
Ms. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tobiasin?
No.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Yes.
So, motion passes.
So motion passes. So we will... So with that being said, I will be stepping down as board president effective immediately. Vice President Romero will take the oath of office as president, and then the board will make a decision on vice president either tonight or at a later board meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll table the vice presidency.
That's the will of the board. Whatever the board, you know, one person can't make that decision, so we'll ask around for that question. But that discussion now will be led by the vice president. So we'll stay for now and where we're seated right now, and then Vice President Romero will run the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
Next, we're going to do the recognitions for the ELCS Students of the Month for November. Camila Rodriguez Florentino in the 10th grade.
Excuse me, I usually go up there. Do you want me to go up there or not?
Mr. Prino, please go up there. Thank you.
Very much, I invite members of the ELCS club to come on up. Do we have anyone from the administrative staff? Right there, okay. The high school, do you want to introduce?
Good evening. I'm going to be introducing Camila. She's a dedicated sophomore at Middletown High School. She serves as the Assistant Administrator Officer for NJROTC. She manages paperwork for more than 120 cadets. And this weekend, she'll compete in the color guard category at the upcoming drill competition. Camila plans to pursue a future in medicine, possibly a cardiologist or neurosurgeon, or to serve in the U.S. Navy. Most importantly, she is inspired by her mother, and she also embodies what it means to be a Mitty. This is Camila.
Hi, everyone, good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody?
Doing well.
I want to start off by saying I'm very thankful for this opportunity. I'm very happy at the moment. I want to thank my mom. She's the first person I look up to. She's a very strong woman. She's fought for me and my brothers. She's always put us in front. As a single mother, she's very strong. I look up to her a lot. I also want to thank Ms. Merchant for this opportunity. She's an amazing principal, I couldn't ask for a different one. Sorry.
It's okay.
You're doing fine.
She's very supportive. Like, the other day, there had been an issue in my classroom. She made sure everything was well and that the issue was fixed. So I'm very thankful to have her as a support, a member of support. I also want to thank everybody that supports me, such as friends, family, teachers, such as Chief over here. And I just want to say I'm very thankful for this evening. Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
And as representatives of the Middletown ELCS Lodge, we are just so delighted to present you with this recognition, and we're sure that there are many more successes to come in your future.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Also, I see Chiefs Lingerlin here. And our award winner was also helping at the pancake breakfast, so that's good. One other item before I step away, the ELCS, the ELCS Club, National ELCS Club, including our club, were offering scholarships, $30,000 or $40,000 scholarships, a number of these. So I'm going to send the information to the high school, and why not one of our students obtain one of these? There's a number of scholarships being offered throughout the United States, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Prino. Next, we're going to do public participation. This is going to be the opportunity to address the board. The board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. The public is not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking. Speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. Anyone who would like to address the board, please come up. Crystal, have we received any letters to the Board of Education that are available on Board Docs?
No.
Now we have superintendent updates.
I'm just trying to stall. So just some reminders, just for some upcoming events. The first, I want to show a quote from former United States Surgeon General Jocelyn Elders that says, "Children must be healthy to learn, and they must learn to be healthy." You know, and just, there's a lot of things that we can't control that's happening right now, but as a district, there's things that we can't control. So this Thursday, November 6th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., we're going to have a food distribution at William A. Carter Elementary School. Supplies will be, they're limited, and they'll be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. So we'll be distributing boxes to families registered in Middletown City School District only. We'll be distributing one box per household. I want to thank Lauren Burr, Heidi Bishop of our Food and Nutrition Services Department, and Erica Dahl with SNAP Ed for coordinating this event. And I also want to thank Walden Savings Bank for their donation towards the food for families. We also sent our information last week to families about the City of Middletown Emergency Food Assistance Program. The program is open to families who are residents of the City of Middletown and receive SNAP benefits. There's information on our website, and again, it was emailed out to families, or families that are interested. There is a signup period that ends November 4th, which is tomorrow. So please, if you're interested, please go to our website or reach out to the City of Middletown for more information. Starting November 18th, we'll have our family teacher conferences. This year, we'll be using a program called Pick a Time for scheduling. It's very similar to Meet the Teacher. You'll be receiving information next week on November 10th regarding scheduling for Pick a Time and family teacher conferences. And then we won't have a board meeting for a few weeks, but before our next board meeting, we will have our next Family Night on December 10th at 6:00 p.m. at Presidential Park Elementary. The focus will be around Computer Science Education Week, so we'll have a lot of interactive activities related to STEM for all ages. We'll also have a workshop from City of Middletown PD, as well as Town and Wallkill on child seat safety. We'll have a presentation for that, and then we'll also have a workshop led by some of our nursing staff on toileting. So those are just some of the topics we'll have covered on December 10th. And then just a reminder, tomorrow is a superintendent's conference date, so staff will be here learning, and then scholars should get a break. So no school for scholars tomorrow. And nets, we just want to highlight, so we've been doing spotlights on excellence, and there is a group in the district that is behind the scenes, but makes the district look really good and visible. So tonight, we asked the communications team to come forward, to be recognized. This is the group that's behind filming the board meetings, filming a concert, you know, our award ceremonies, they help out with graduation, all the videos that you've seen at board meetings, the website, Facebook, they're all over the place. So we just wanted to highlight them for the work they've done, not just this year, but previous year as well. So we just wanted to highlight them for the work they've done, not just this year, but previous year as well.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Leonis, the Director of Technology. And I have the pleasure here tonight, to be here this evening, to take a few moments to recognize this exceptional group of professionals who, like was mentioned, a lot of their work is done behind the scenes, and yet their work impacts every student, every family, and every staff member in our district. And that group is our communications department. In today's world, effective communication is more than just sending information. It's about building trust, transparency, and connection between our schools, families, and the community that we serve. And our communication strives to do exactly that. They help create all of our videos, digital media, in addition to managing the promotion, the production, and the recording of live events throughout the district, including tonight's board meeting. They manage news, urgent alerts that are sent to our school community, in addition to maintaining and designing our website and social media platforms. Their work is essential in promoting the greatness that's happening every day in our classrooms. Whether they are sending out a mini-minute on our Mitty TV page or getting ready to broadcast the highly anticipated news on snow days that school is closed. They ensure that every message sent is clear, accurate, and accessible to everyone. They tell our story before it's told for us, and that is the story of students growing, teachers innovating, and a district continually striving for excellence. On behalf of the Board of Education and our school community, I would like to thank them for their creativity, professionalism, and dedication. Thank you. I'd like them to introduce themselves as well.
Yeah, you guys know me, Paul Fox.
Caroline Woodward.
Brian Sebeck.
Jason Tomasulo, Communication Tosa.
Also, I would like to thank the board for amending the agenda. We were trying to create some time for Kevin Witt to be here tonight, but he is at a common council meeting. So I'd like to mention that Kevin Witt is part of our team and a huge part of it as well. And in addition, Anthony Ricci cannot be here tonight. He helps us out with a lot of digital media and photography. Thank you.
If anyone has to make, or wants to make a comment, have any questions, we can go around the table. Mr. Estrada.
Thank you, President Romero. These guys mean a lot to me. I go back with them. I don't even remember. It's gotta be almost 22 years now. And definitely since 2007, when the stadium opened. The amount of support that they provide to this district is immeasurable. If you're a parent out there who's had to deal with Chromebooks and things of that nature, you've dealt with our IT department. If you go out to a football game and you see the amazing introduction videos that are put together each and every year, you've been talking to Brian over there at the IT department. The videos that we see on our website, all these little things that we take for granted as board members and taxpayers and stakeholders in our school district. You know, these guys are, without a doubt, the best in New York State. And they're our, we went to a conference, the State School Board Conference, a couple weeks ago. And one of the vendors came up to us. Mr. Moore was there, Mr. Rett was there. And what he said, that he went to another school district. And the response, when they were trying to put stuff together regarding IT, was, "Who do you think we are, Middletown?" That's the reputation that our group has with the rest of the Lower Hudson Valley, and mind you, the entire state. So thank you for all the work you do. And you go above and beyond, as far as your hours and everything, to make sure that we put out a quality product. And the reason why you guys do what you do is the reason why we get so many events here, why our parents. Because this does not happen everywhere. You know, if you look at our website, and you look at Mitty TV, and you look at concerts on Mitty TV, or you're looking at the play, that does not happen in every district. We kinda take it for granted, because we see it every day, so we think it's automatic, but it's not. So this district should be very proud of all the work that you guys do.
Anyone else? Andrew, Mr. Moore.
Actually, I echo all the same sentiments as Mr. Estrada. But for someone that has worked in the media space for a number of years, you know, working for the National Basketball Association and in production, I take pride, as I seen at the Chunk a Treat the other day, and I was telling him how good work he does. Because, just to go back a little bit, we were at the conference, and the video for Mr. Perino, it was by far the best quality video I've seen in a long time. It just, retrospect to the other presenters that were there that had videos, it just showed to the quality of work that comes out of, you know, from what you guys do every day. So it was just, it was great to see, and I see how much pride and joy that you guys take on doing this work. And trust me, I've seen the growth over the years, so it makes me exciting to see. And I'm hoping that the students and the community could take heed to the programs that we have here and actually lean on you guys for any support that's needed. But I do see the quality. I do see the level of input and work that you guys, and craftsmanship that you guys put into, and it's definitely pretty impressive. So kudos to you guys, and continue to do good work.
Thank you, Andrew. Dr. DeJesus.
Hi. I also echo what Mr. Estrada and Mr. Moore said. And I wanna add to that, that the pictures, they also create memories. Because there's a picture I have hanging up over the fireplace in my house of my daughter when she ran here. She ran track here. She ran states and nationals. And there is a picture of her doing a three-step over the hurdle, and her arms are extended out, and her legs are extended out. And every time I look at that picture, I'm reminded of junior and senior, and how they worked with her, and the athlete that's in her. So it also makes memories. And even now, when my granddaughter participated in the Special Olympics, and she saw herself on the district website, she's, "Grandma, grandma, grandma, I'm on TV." So she was really excited about it. So it's also empowering for the kids to see themselves capturing those moments. Jason, I was with him earlier today, and they were, and I like the way that you explained to them why you were there and what you were doing, so that they could feel comfortable. So that they could feel comfortable, and they wasn't like, "Why is somebody recording me?" And I'll share a little bit more about that later. But the kids are also excited about seeing themselves. And like I said, it's making those memories that we can hold on to when they were in the district, whether it's the middle school, the high school, or the elementary school. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DeJesus. Mr. Lugo.
Good evening. Yeah, I wanna add on to what Ms. DeJesus said. I actually just emailed Mr. Witt the other day, telling him how much I love, like, the camera crew, and how you guys do such a great job. And I had actually said in the email about, because I went to both the Monhegan and Twin panels to talk to the sixth graders, and I had asked to, like, for just like a little bit of media. And I had said at the end, "I feel like all the panelists and myself would love to have these, would love to have these media to look back on in our futures." And just like she said, it does feel very empowering to see myself on my school's website every once in a while, and to see me, and just like, it's a surreal experience to just see myself, and I'm there for a reason, and it's a good reason. So yeah. No, yeah. So I just wanna say thank you. I definitely commend you for all your hard work and dedication to giving us all the media and videos that we need to demonstrate how much of a good community we are here at Middletown. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patel, did you have anything to say?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else wanna share anything? Mr. Rett?
No, quickly, ditto to what everybody else said. I mean, you guys are very approachable. You take on any challenges. Sometimes we come at you at the last minute with stuff, and you try to figure it out. And so, really appreciate that. And as Dr. DeJesus said, a lot of good memories, you know. You guys know how to catch them and put them in a picture that everybody can really appreciate. Not just from like with sports, but you know, with the actual educational activities and presentations. You know, you guys got a great team, and appreciate you guys. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Mr. Perino.
Sometimes it's all about the numbers. Kevin, how many computers and Chromebooks do you handle? Come on up here and...
We have over 10,000 devices in the school district.
Over 10,000?
Correct. We're fully one-to-one. Every single student receives a Chromebook. Every single staff member essentially receives a Chromebook, with the exception of custodians and some support staff. But we have lots of devices. If it runs on electricity, then it's a computer, for the most part nowadays. Everything from air conditioning controllers to mechanical, things that you wouldn't even think about. The door controllers, every single door swipe is a computer, essentially. So a lot of things.
You do a tremendous job, and I know Victor Rackey back there, he's a member of your department too.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
So, good. Well, good for you guys. You're right on top of things, as usual. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And John, just to add, you know, this is just some of them. You know, we have soccer championships being played tonight down at the stadium, so some of the crews over there. So it goes to show you how, on one day, that you can have people all over the place from those departments dealing and, you know, putting together A-plus efforts at each of these events.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. Mr. Byerson, did you wanna share anything? Thank you.
I certainly appreciate there's a board.
Absolutely. Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I agree. My constituents are 1,000%. Being on the board, only, this is only my sixth year, but I've seen so much growth in comparison from 2020 to now. Stated art, you know, just driving by the schools and seeing the visuals on the screens of upcoming events, and just something that is like, you know, to the community. You know, you can drive by and actually see. You can stand there and watch what's gonna come up in the district. And I think that's super important for the community, amongst everything, the sports coverage. You know, and here, the Media Center, I remember when this didn't exist, and this is just amazing. The studio downstairs, you know, you can, guys can film a movie down there. Like, the students can do so much with all the technology we have, but you guys definitely lead the way in great fashion, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'm gonna agree, and I'm gonna say that you're all extremely talented. Thank you for everything that you do, and your work is stellar. So thank you. I appreciate you. Now, we're gonna move on to Board of Education updates, and we're going to start with Mr. Lugo and Mrs. Patel.
Good evening. I believe last time we spoke, we had just started our Red Ribbon Week. That went great. We just wrapped up this past Friday on Halloween. Outside of our cafeteria is full with pledges from our scholars who are dedicated to being drug-free and living in a drug-free environment, and continue to promote that type of health within our community. We've just been focused on connecting everybody, making sure that we all aren't at each, literally, how I try and explain almost every time, so we're not at each other's throats. So that everybody, like, even if somebody has a problem, it's not affecting everybody else in their vicinity. And that it's, I guess you could say it's all contained and controlled, so that it doesn't have to lead to any escalation. But we do a lot with making sure that everybody is familiar with everybody, and that we all, we all have people to know for the future. So like, I guess you could say, in the remembrance form, just as we have a few unfortunate, yeah, unfortunate tragedies that has happened in this community. Just as tomorrow will be the one year of a loss in our community, a close friend of mine, Mr. ... My friend, Tefuzi Reed. Sorry. Sorry, I don't like crying. But, yeah. Here in this community, we do a lot with making sure we have remembrance within one another. It's like, we have that classic saying that we are legacy makers. Even if somebody's legacy was cut short, they still have a legacy that was made. It can still be lived and remembered. And even if it's just to take a time out of your day to think about old memories, or even something simple that puts your mind at ease with a simple remembrance. Like, we have... Sorry. Even if it's like to write a card to remember somebody, or to just sit back and talk to somebody to help you relive that joy that you felt when everything wasn't how it is now. I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say everything is perfect. Not everything's gonna always be perfect. But it's definitely a difference. I can say that. One thing Middletown has learned and can understand is grief. And it's just, having to carry that every day, you get used to it until you get to a day like tomorrow. Because then, even though we don't have school, I'll wake up, and I'll remember how I felt a year ago. And it's just, it's just crazy to think about. But it's like, I understand that everything happens for a reason. And that I, you can't control everything that happens in your life and others' lives. It's sometimes, every, sometimes stuff that happens in your life is just out of control, and that's okay. I just believe we all just need to hold on and just keep one another close to us. But, but yeah. I've just been focused on making sure everybody is one, so that we're all in unison. That's the one thing I don't like, being that, everybody being at each other's throats. And it's just a lot that plays role to be that mediator. But I'm still doing it. I still, I still got my faith. I still got my hope. I'm sorry, I got a little emotional to start off, but I believe I'm done for my portion. Thank you.
Eden, thank you, and thank you for being vulnerable and trusting us. Thank you. Ms. Patel.
Good evening, everybody. To go back to what Eden has said, there are a lot of support within the Middletown. Good evening, everybody. To go back to what Eden has said, there are a lot of support within the Middletown district, especially in the high school, there are supportive places where students are able to talk about how they feel due to this tragic time and they're able to write cards for the ones that they've lost. And just to show that like, in a way, we still honor them, even if they're still not here with us. They're still here within our hearts and that's what we still want to show. Trying to speak in a more positive route, there are, it was Halloween, this 31st, and we had our trunk or treat on the 29th of October and we had a lot, a lot of people. I would say probably over 1,000 people have came in and I was there personally. I was handing out candy to all of the people who came and I probably ran out of like 12 bags of like this size bags. Like it was crazy, but that's what you want to see, you know? You don't want to see like, nobody show up. I'd rather have like 2,000 people show up than rather than one. So it was honestly a nice experience to see everybody having fun and dressing up. There's also things with the college and career. Obviously now is the deadline for early action and there's a lot of seniors especially, or juniors who are applying early for colleges. There's a lot of them in the college and career center right now and it's just a little hectic with all of it. But I know that our guidance counselors, Ms. Swire, Ms. Weeks and Mr. Brown are doing all they can to help support all the students who are taking that step to either college, trade school or any type of career that they want to do outside of school. Last but not least, we just opened our Scholastic vending machine. So students are able to get coins from their English classes. It's one golden coin that they'll be able to use in the vending machine and they'll be able to get so many books. And alongside of that, we've also had our book fair last week and pretty much almost all books ran out too. So we love to see that, you know, middies are starting to read. It's really nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice job. Mr. Moore? Well, let's go next with community engagement updates. Can we start with you, Mr. Moore?
Perfect. Thank you. I have a few. I guess we start with the pictures and then I'll go into the next. This is this past, well, actually, the week has gone by pretty quickly. This is just a couple of photos. We had a tremendous, great turnout at the trunk or treat. This is not even probably 0.2% of the people that were there. We had tremendous amount of, you know, this gives a little bit more of a glance of how many people that came out for the trunk or treat. It was, it was my first one. I didn't know it was this big and I'm happy to continue to attend for the future. But it was definitely a great showing. The weather was perfect and a lot of our students had a good time on the grounds here, right between the board office and the high school. I didn't get a chance to walk all the way down, but as you can see at the top, you got one of our camera guys up there. I was able to catch him as he was capturing some good shots. I tried to get you in there as well. But it was definitely a great turnout and I'm happy to see all the kids had a good time. This was this past, is our current student board member. He was actually one of the panelists that was on stage with, I won't give out who's gonna be salutatory or valutatory. I prefer to save that for later because I learned that during that time period as well. But it was definitely a good experience and just some of the takeaways that I was able to come across that some of the seniors talked about that, you know, the sixth grade should take away from, there's some things that they experienced. Was exploring more, take advantage of all opportunities offered, good relationships with your peers, handling stress, leaning on to your friends as your support system, growing apart is a part of the process. But learning from separation reflects on the focus and the communication. It all pays off. We're good, we're good decisions. The game is won during the week of practice. That's the payday. And some other ones was take accountability and own when you're wrong and call for action. For all students to take part and explore all the opportunities after school. And the last one was a quote, comparison is the thief of joy. So something, some takeaways from there. The students were pretty engaged as our fellow board members were there. Mr. Williams, Mr. Perrino and Mr. Tobiasin was also there in attendance. So it was definitely a good showing and I appreciate the principal for inviting us out there to take part in this great event. I guess I will leave some of these stuff because I know Mr. Tobiasin is also a part of the Mont Hagan rep as well. So I don't want to steal too much of the shine from it, but I'm pretty sure she'll be able to provide some updates if that's okay. Mr. Tobiasin.
Okay. Mr. Tobiasin, you were there. Did you want to share anything in regards to what's up there?
No, is also there, though he's not the rep. I think Mr. Moore did a fine job.
Thank you, Mr. Tobiasin. Mr. Perrino?
Thank you. One of our former students, Killian Mullins, who was at the Elks Pancake Breakfast, former NGOTC cadet. And he also worked as sub-clerical for NGOTC. He is leaving tomorrow for Marine Corps Boot Camp for 13 weeks and this will be followed by additional training of 10 weeks before reporting to the Marine Reserve Center in Syracuse, New York. And then finally, after all this training, will be coming back to Middletown. So I know we all wish him well. Killian Mullins.
Beautiful.
Did a nice job in NGOTC. Secondly, there's a saying, everybody can't do everything, but everyone can do something. Superintendent Adama talked about the food distribution. There's also another distribution program in the district and that's the backpack, the No Kid Hungry Program, which is sponsored by the Middletown Lions Club. Glynnis Foglia coordinates that and there are approximately 120 students involved in this who receive backpacks on a Friday to, to go home to help with the, help with food on the weekend. There's a number of individuals who pack up on a Thursday. And I'd like to invite these people, they're unsung heroes, they do a lot of work to the future board meeting, to the next board meeting. I'd just like to read you one of the menus. Glynnis is a master of getting food from various organizations. So here's what in one back, recent backpack. Honey Nut Cereal, Aper World Cereal, Chili Assorted Instant Cereals, Spaghetti Rings, Tomato Soup, Crunch Puffs, Vanilla Yogurt, Strawberry Nutrigen Bars, Chocolate Bars, Canned Fruit, Instant Oatmeal Envelope, Soft and Chewy Bar, Pasta and Sauce Alfredo, Apples and Bread. Helps on the weekend. If you're interested in donating or if there's someone who believes you're eligible for the program, a parent, Glynnis said you could give her a call. I have her number. It's 845-343-5508. Or you can speak to the principal at your child's building and they would give you some more information on that. I was going to speak about Dick Wolf Slayer because there was a longtime teacher in the district. You see the Wolf Slayer Gate in Fowler Field. He was honored about a week ago. Dick's saying was, "Today is another great day to excel." That, that's what Dick said. There's, some of the people were there, some of the family, some of the former individuals, some of the former staff members along with the plaque, Dick Wolf Slayer plaque, Dave Coats and his team did a nice job, Justin Surge, Kevin Gleason. Dick was, of course, a football coach and a tennis coach in Middletown. I'll continue with this next time. I don't like to go through.
You could finish now, Mr. Perrino.
Well, Dick devoted a large part of his life to Middletown. He won more games than any other football coach in MHS history, 142, and was eighth on the Section 9 list of all-time win lists. He earned Coach of the Year honors by the Time Trail Record in 1976, '93 and '94. During varsity stints, he was varsity coach '67 to '78 and '83 to '95. He also won the A-Doo So title, his first season in consecutive Section 9 Class A titles in '93 and '94. He was a great model for students. He couldn't have done all this if he was not a great model and a great motivator, motivator of many of the students who have spoken, speak and have spoken very highly of Mr. Wolf Slayer. He had a blend of sternness, compassion, fairness and kindness. He helped children throughout school. Again, he liked to say, "Today is another great day to excel." So there's some of the administrators, the executive principal, the assistant principal, superintendent was there, director of personnel, Norv O'Connell was there, Dr. Connell. It was just a nice day. The weather was good and it was a very memorable and moving experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perrino. Mr. Redd?
Believe it or not, I have nothing at this time.
What?
What's going on?
Dr. DeJesus. Rose, you're skipping. Thank you. Dr. DeJesus?
Good evening, everyone, once again. I have a few updates. So I had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Tracy Sorrentino from the Maple Hill Annex and she and I have partnered with the kids that are in the expressive arts, creative arts program are gonna create index cards, multiplication index cards for the kids at the annex. On the 7th, I'll be able to participate in their heart rock and on the 14th, I'll be reading to the kids at Maple Hill Annex. I got, I was able to see them transition off the bus very smoothly. The communication was clear amongst everyone. It was, it was a great opportunity for me to witness. I also was able to share in the Twin Towers Heritage Program that they put on. It was, it was, it was really nice. The kids were very happy to show off their art, their exhibit. I went to one table and theirs was Bad Bunny. And so I said, "Do you know he's gonna be singing at the halftime?" And they was like really excited about it, explaining the culture, their food. And then I hear a little voice, "Grandma, Grandma, Grandma." I turned around. Oh, it's my grandson there. And then he, he was very eager to show me his project on Brazil and he was explaining everything to me about Brazil. For Maple Hill, I had the privilege today to participate in their engineering program with the fifth graders. It was very interesting. They had to take tape, empty toilet paper roll. What else? There was three things. Oh, and sticks. And they had to create a project where they had to capture a python and it couldn't get out. So the kids were very creative in doing that and they were excited. They worked together as a team and putting that project together and then explaining it. Also, in the month of November, I'll have the opportunity with Maple Hill to attend the PTO Fall Fest on the 10th and the fifth grade assembly on the 20th and the 24th. Something super exciting as well, the My Sisters Keepers Program. They have over 200 women, young women signed up for that, that particular program. And at the last meeting, there were 120 that were in attendance. Just want to read something from a message that was sent to me. They sent the video, but I don't, I didn't get a chance to send it in. It says, "We are hosting a sisters' giving on 11/25 and we have a Blazer Drive. The Blazer Drive is on the 25th from 2:30 to 4:30 and that they have a domestic violence awareness workshop and where the girls were able to discuss and identify healthy and unhealthy relationships." They have various speakers that are coming in. I'm actually gonna be one of the speakers talking from the clinical lens. And Ian, I want to say to you that you are human, so it's okay to cry. It's okay if you, if you didn't show those emotions, we would be sitting here wondering why. It's okay to cry and also to let you know that as part of your healing, there are five different phases that you're gonna go through and everybody heals different. One of the things that I teach and I'll share with you in your healing is that it's called that time of the year to try to do something in the person's memory that they like, whether you try to cook their favorite food, do something that they like so that you're doing it in honor of their memory and it also helps with the healing process. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. DeJesus. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to mention a event happening at Parks and Rec. I only have a little bit of information and hopefully, Ms. Romero, you can fill the people in. It's Saturday, November 15th at Middletown Parks and Recreation. They're having a boxing exhibition. Coach Mitch, our former board member, is helping lead the way over there. Their boxing program is awesome. A couple of our board members have done workouts over there with Coach Mitch. A great, great enthusiast when it comes to, to the boxing world. So real quick on that, I did want to mention the MBK program. I'm on a schedule where I've been making it every other week. I missed last week, but the week prior, myself and a counselor from Twin Towers, Mr. Andre Murray, were able to go to the MBK meeting every, that's held every Wednesday. And the energy was good. We had a real good talk. Mr. Everton Brown had a good talk with the young men. Mr. Kenneth Ward, thank you. The energy in there is just great, you know? Accountability was kind of the, the, the talk of that day and how to hold each other accountable. It's a brotherhood. We even got a cool little handshake that I can't show you guys. You have to be part of MBK. Mr. Lugo knows it and he, Mr. Lugo actually taught me the handshake, so thank you for that. So yeah, it's going great. I can't wait to get on these trips and for these guys to experience, you know, outside the district, outside the town. You'd be surprised. Last year, on one of our trips, we took a Leprechaun bus, the first trip, that was to DC. And the amazement of kids, I don't know how many kids hadn't never been on a Leprechaun bus before. And that's a reality, right? We take it for granted and, and you know, we, a city bus, right, or a school bus is different. But you know, it was just very impactful and empowering to see the young men so excited. So I'm looking forward to that. I'm gonna show off a little bit right now. Ms. Patel, Kim Cho?
I'm good. How about you?
See that? You guys, I'm showing off a little bit. So that's something we have. I, I see you're always never too old to learn, right? And that's kind of my thing right now. So Ms. Patel, every time I said I see her, she has to teach me a word in what language now? She said it better than me. So that's my thing. So, you know, but we have to learn from our young people as well, right? We just can't, our teachers as well, our staff. I was able to witness the, the arrival of the high school students and the departure of the students with Mr. Donahue and Kate Shitty and so many staff, so many security. It's an amazing thing to watch because this is a small city coming in and out this building. So as a liaison at the high school, I wanted to go over and see the, our new machines that are basically like TSA, like, you know, considered with the, the way the bags go through. So that technology is awesome. I think it's a great start of the year. I'm super excited. The holidays are coming up. My business does a toy drive and a food drive. The food drive, we're starting Monday, a week from today, so I'll have more information on that. And while I have you, Superintendent Adoma, the Maple Hill Food Giveaway is when again? And while I have you, Superintendent Adoma, the Maple Hill Food Giveaway is when again?
The 1st Thursday, November 7th, at William Carter.
At William Carter, okay, because I want to make sure, I want to get my son over there. We want to-
Six.
We want to help out. Yes, that's awesome. We definitely want to give our hands, helping hands. And I think it's so important that the youth does join in something like that. So really quick, Mr. Lugo, I think also Mr. Brown was talking about that even before, right, the food drive through the MBK? I know we're doing a clothing, I know we have a whole clothing unit upstairs, but I thought he was talking about a food drive tour, that we would come together. Actually, Mr. Byson said it too, that she had mentioned it, that I do it, that we're going to come together maybe and do that. But I'll have more information on that by the next meeting, for sure. Thank you.
Before Mr. Estrada, I do want to, I want to share for the Boxing Expo, Mr. Williams does want to invite the entire community, friends and family, and it is on the 15th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
I wanted to go to that event. Mr. Williams had asked me to do some of the announcing. Unfortunately, it falls the same weekend as the soccer championships here at the stadium, and I'm already committed to there. I only have one item. I didn't think Dr. DeJesus was going to be able to make it today, so I did want to mention, I think it's, I think I have it up there. So our own Dr. DeJesus has a ribbon cutting tomorrow at her location on 40 Grove Street from 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock for the Second Chance Counseling PLLC. So congratulations. I know the media will be out there, so. And so we invite all board members to go over there and provide some support if they're able to. And that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada. I have some pictures that I want to share from Twin Towers Middle School in regards to their celebration of the Hispanic heritage. Throughout the month of October, scholars at Twin Towers engaged in a variety of cross-curricular activities honoring and exploring Hispanics and Latinx history, culture, and contributions. In math AIS classes, explored the achievements of Hispanic mathematicians through interactive, skill-based activities. Scholars created presentations, highlighted a chosen Hispanic or Latinx individual using their timelines to connect historical accomplishments with their study of integers. In English Language Arts, students participated in an author's study featuring Hispanic writers Julia Alvarez and Sandra Sisneros, reading stories that reflected the complexities of embracing dual cultures. Other classes analyzed work such as Pablo Neruda's Silencio and Gabriel Garcia Marquez, "A Very Old Man With Enormous Wings", to examine the use of precise language, imagery, and symbolism. Additionally, students researched notable Hispanic figures and designed creative one-pageer projects through various digital platforms and art integration. They shared cultural reflections and fun facts with their peers. Science classes learned about the groundbreaking work of Hispanic and Latino scientists, including Dr. Ellen Ochoa, the first Hispanic woman in space, and Dr. Lydia Villa, I don't know how to say this last name, Komarov, Komarov, a pioneer in generic engineering. After discussing their accomplishments and the importance of diversity in science, students completed reflective writing pieces and how these scientists inspired them. In social studies, students designed a trifold display highlighting key aspects of Hispanic culture. When combined, these projects form a vibrant, school-wide gallery walk that showcased the diversity, heritage, and tradition of Hispanic communities. Spanish scholars, in Spanish, scholars researched one of the 21 Spanish-speaking countries to create digital presentations featuring each nation's culture, exports, arts, sports, and climate. The projects were displayed to broaden students' understanding of the Spanish-speaking world and its rich traditions. In ELL, students created colorful piñatas representing the flag of their home countries. These festive creatives filled with treats celebrated cultural pride and creativity. Meanwhile, in art, students explored the history and symbolism of sugar skull and Dia de los Muertos. Using the paper quilt technique, they created intricate sugar skulls that beautifully blended artistic expression with cultural appreciation. There was also a dance, and the band was present. This is all I have for now. Do we have any committee reports? Mr. Redd?
Yes, policy meeting, policy committee meeting is going to be on November 14th at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Any other committee updates or reports? Yeah.
Sorry. My Brothers Keeper, we're having a Dress for Success Drive. So any spare ties, dress shirts, suit jackets, come on down, drop them off at our College and Career Center. You can get in contact with either myself or Mr. Brown on specific drop-offs and like times. But yeah, we are doing a Dress for Success Drive. That's for ties, shirts, and suit jackets for our young men for their professional events.
Thank you.
Do you guys take shoes too? Mr. Lugo, do you guys take shoes too?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
I got some too.
Because I have, I have good authority, he's got a nice secret.
Yeah, I think I could donate a few at this point.
Yeah, we take shoes.
Any other, Mr. Lugo, were you done? I'm sorry. You're good? Are you sure? Yeah, doesn't sound convincing.
While he's looking, Ms. Romero.
Okay, we're going to come back to you, Mr. Lugo, Dr. DeJesus.
The DEI Committee will be meeting on November 13th at 5:30, and that will be our first official meeting.
Thank you. Any other committee reports or updates? Mr. Moore?
I have one. And just so the public know, we do have a new formulated committee that's going to take place. It's an athletic committee that holds houses, two of our current, actually, three of our current board members in collaboration with our athletic department. We do have some great initiatives that's coming up down the pipeline that I think will benefit and roll out for the winter sports. And we'll definitely be able to share that with Ms. Adoma to be able to share out to the community within the next couple of days. But just so you know, progress is being made, and we do have some great information sessions that's going to take place between now and the start of our winter sessions. Right now, it's pretty busy when it comes to just the changeover, because we are in the mix of championship, ending of the fall, the championship, and then the beginning of the start of the winter session. So it's really no time really, but we are making time available so the parents and the prospective student athletes that are going to take part in the winter session have an opportunity to get up to speed on what the goals and expectations are moving forward. So just want to provide that update pretty quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Lugo, we ready?
Yeah, I believe so. I believe our Dress for Success Drive is ongoing, so I'm not too sure if there's, it's just whenever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's like a set ending for those specific stuff.
Okay. If anyone wants to donate, where do they go?
You can come to our College and Career Center and drop it off, or maybe our, stop by the, I forgot what it's called. Yeah, the Little Vestibule, that's what it's called? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, stop by our front desk and just like basically explain to them what's going on, just drop it off there. They'll contact either Mr. Brown or somebody that can get in contact with myself, and we'll get it all set up. So thank you.
Thank you. We recently went to a conference. I know that Mr. Perrino was going to be ready to be presenting today based on his experience as he did a virtual. He was also an award recipient. So, Mr. Perrino, we can start with you tonight.
You know, I took a whole notebook full of notes, but I want to concentrate on one item, and that's the Dignity Index. There were two sessions on the Dignity Index. One, Dr. Tim Schreiber was the spokesperson for, and which was excellent. The other session was also, was also good, and that was Dr. Megan Monroe, who is associated with, quote, "Unite", which is the, which has originated and developed this Dignity Index. Interestingly enough, Dr. Schreiber, when he started, he was very, very animated, and he said, "Well, people confuse me with a Kennedy." And the reason he said that was because he is a Kennedy. His mother, Eunice Kennedy Schreiber, and his father, Sergeant Schreiber, so.
How did you know that, Mr. Perrino?
Pardon me, you know, this is, this is an excellent, this Dignity Index is excellent, and I did a little research on it, further research on it. Yeah, in addition to that, he is the, one of the directors of the Special Olympics since, for a number of years now. Let me just read you, and this Dignity Index, interestingly enough, originated in Utah. And I'm going to read you what Ken S. Gardner Policy Institute said about this. And he's quoting Dr. Randall, who was the University of Utah president. "The Dignity Index relies on one of the most ancient tools of social change in the history of human beings, conscience. When we see how often we use contempt and how harmful it is, we see we're a part of the problem. And also, that makes us part of the solution." It actually started, the Dignity Index started as a political, a political kind of spinoff. And students actually categorized people who were running for election and reelection on this eight-point scale. If you look at that scale, and thank you, Crystal, for getting that up on the board, it ranges from 1 to 8, as you see there. When you get to number 5, then things, then things start to become a little better. But number 1, if you notice number 1 on there, this number 1 escalates from violent words to violent actions. And I think we've seen this. We've seen this on television. I've seen it in many years in education, and I'm sure Mr. Lugo and Ms. Patel have seen this in high school, when people start arguing with each other, and then it may result in little fistakhs, fighting. So that's one level. Level 2, not so much violent action, but accusatory. This person is evil, they will ruin us if we let them, it's us or them, that kind of mentality. You get to level 3, not too much better, it attacks a person's moral character. We are the good people, and they are the bad people. And I'm sure, I'm sure if you think about it, we've heard this. It's us versus them again, the country can't win unless they lose, on and on. Level 4, marks or attacks the other side, backgrounds or belief. We're better than those people, they're different. Again, they don't really belong, they don't share our values. They're not one of us. Now, level 5, things to start evening out a little. Everyone has a right to be there. People start listening very respectfully to each other and explain their own goals. Now, even if the other side doesn't share a point of view, both sides are there, and at least they start talking, and there's no name-calling or negative actions. You get to level 6. And level 6, people see as a duty to work with the other side to find common grounds and to act on it. Now, this Dignity Index, it goes to level 7 and 8, they fully engage, people engage. And level 8, believe everyone has an inherent work and treat everyone with dignity no matter what. And that's something to remember. It's gotten from the political arena now to the behavioral and educational arena. I think that something like this would be excellent. We have restorative practices. That would be excellent to introduce some of our students to this Dignity Index. One of the points that Dr. Schreiber pointed out, and I like this saying, he said, "Sometimes you have to turtle." And when he said to turtle, that means you just have to be quiet, listen to the other individuals, and then make your point. So that's good for everyone to remember, students. It's good for members of the board, myself, and everyone else to remember. And he sort of ended, both presenters took the attitude, "If you can't define something, how are you going to solve the problem?" So that was one of the highlights. The second thing, then I'll be done. One of our, we invited, and I say we, because Crystal was there, and she was working along, doing her thing, and she was listening and observing. One of the events, the food service people, the Olympia Corporation, we actually are part, we do get food from that, those individuals. And it turns out that they have a wide selection of food. The price is good, and both Lauren Burr and Heidi Bishop, they knew the presenter of the program. So I thought that was very interesting. So I'll let somebody else go on from here, but very rewarding, conscious. I just like doing the, doing the virtual. It reminds me of being back in college, taking a lot of notes and thinking about it, reading them over and so on. So thank you.
Thank you, and again, congratulations on your well-deserved award.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Redd?
Well, yes, just to piggyback on what just being said. For the most part, we had a wonderful time at the New York State School Board Association Conference. And on this particular information that Mr. Perrino is sharing, it covers a lot of different aspects of learning, you know? And Denise, as well as Ed and Dr. DeJesus, Andrew, we sat in on some really good conferences. I didn't know he was going to share at this time, but maybe we can double up next week and really touch on some things, because there were some really eye-opening things, you know, as it pertains to like even doubling back on things like implicit biases and just building relationships with students. You know, I think that was one of the big ideals we really wanted to reemphasize when we got back here, is the importance of teachers recognizing their role in de-escalating situations by building better relationship with kids, getting to know them. So you can see when they're having difficulties, you can sense it in advance. So we'll talk about that more, we'll put something together next week.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Dr. DeJesus, do you have anything you want to share?
I responded that I will report out next week.
Okay.
But one, as Mr. Perrino was speaking, one, something that was said that they jumped out at me, and then I'll report out next week, which was, if we are spending more time in our meeting- our meeting talking about other agenda items versus our students, then we have to take a look at what we're doing.
I remember that, yeah. Is there anything you'd like to share, Mr. Estrada? Okay. Drew, anything you'd like to share?
To be honest with you, the meeting, I mean, the conference was, I'll say by far, this is my third one attending, and second, actually the second I went to the city, but the third one overall. And I will say this one by far, I believe far as the layout and the construction of the whole entire program was pretty, pretty impressive. They made it pretty engaging as far as from the topics, and as far as collaborating with the other school districts as well. You know, we were a part of the A Team, and I'm a, give a little bit of a word that was created by my fellow colleague over here, was, we pretty much broke down like dealing with conflict resolution. And one thing that we came up, that we realized was to communicate with clarity. And then our word, the word that was created was "communicality." By Mr. Red.
I missed a red.
Second was listening with patience.
A couple of different ones.
He was on a roll.
You were on a roll that day, for sure. Open-mindedness and no judgment. And some of the, you know, things that we should, you know, prevent from doing is being impatient and, you know, making things personal. But also, a few, some of the takeaways. To be honest with you, we could probably spend at least another two or three hours, all of us breaking down the stuff that we've learned. But just to know that, you know, the work and stuff that we're doing and taking part in these conferences definitely gives us an opportunity to build a platform for us to be able to, you know, come together collectively and be able to move forward through any challenges that we may face. And I think, you know, a lot of the topics was dealing with a lot of, you know, being able to deal with conflict and dealing with different biases and stuff that Mr. Red mentioned. And it really dug it, allowed us to like do a deep dive into our governance of, as board members, and then also what we look forward to from, what we could bring back to the community and the district as a whole. So, I would love to get a good three minutes next board so I could really comprise all the notes because it's quite a few. And it will definitely take a lot of time as, you know, Mr. Perino has definitely only touched base on probably not even 1% of what we was able to experience during that conference. So, thanks. That's about it.
Thank you. Anyone else want to share anything?
Yes, I would like to share something. Firstly, congratulations to Mr. Perino, State School Board Member of the Year is an amazing accomplishment. And I've said it once before that with all your knowledge and wisdom in the school business, that if you looked up "school board member" in the dictionary, it should be your picture. And I mean that just in my sixth year coming in, I've learned a lot from you. And I think that was, whole heartedly, I think that was overdue. But it came, and, you know, everything comes on time, they say. So, the investment of this board, you know, whether there are sayings that, you know, the board is one way or another, the investment that was showed at this convention for seven of the nine members to be there either in person or virtually speaks volumes about this board and the investment and the time. Like a lot, you know, I think a lot of people still don't know, this isn't a paid position. So, and we all have full-time jobs. We're all very active in the community. So, you know, I commend you guys. I couldn't make it. I had some medical issues I had to attend to. I went last year, and I went the year previous to Buffalo. Had an amazing time and learned a lot. So, you know, this possibly being my last year of my last term, I was definitely gonna try to make it. But you guys definitely brought back some good energy. You guys were keeping me updated while out there, and I look forward to your presentations next meeting on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. You were missed. Upcoming dates and reminders, we have Mon Hagan Fall Dance on November 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 at Mon Hagan Middle School. We have the SUNY Orange Kids Chemistry Night, November 7th at 6:00 PM at the Raleigh Center for Science and Engineering. It's at 10 East Conklin Avenue. Twin Towers Fall Dance, November 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 at Twin Towers Middle School. The Middletown High School Fall Play, November 8th, 7:00 PM. November 9th, 2:00 PM. We have the College Panel and Information Night on November 12th at 6:00 PM at Middletown High School. The NYSPHSAA School, NISFA, Boys' Soccer Championship on November 14th through 16th at the Middletown High School. We also have Middletown High School Band Concert, and that's gonna take place on November 19th at 6:30 at the high school as well. Our next board meeting is November 20th. That's gonna be a workshop, and that is gonna be followed by a regular meeting on December 11th. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Great night, everyone. Thank you so much. What do I say?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.